Ready to hear it? We need to wait for Becky to go in.
Oh, yeah. I didn't, she was so quiet, I didn't realize she'd slipped away.
It is kind of fun to rent a piece of equipment zone, pick up those trees and stack them. It's kind of fun to do that.
It didn't take us long to figure out if you just cut them down and leave them there, they turn into giant tumbleweeds. But yeah, Tom's done a real good job of keeping ahead of ours.
Is that, does that bug you?
Yes. My hair hasn't touched my ears in probably five years. Another sideburn stick out and turns everything kind of white.
Hey now.
Hey, that happens.
That's not...
What's wrong with that?
Yeah.
Nothing in fifteen years.
In fifteen years.
Okay.
She's not at that age yet, just wait.
It is 9:01. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item of, on our agenda today is to open with prayer. Commissioner Ruler, please.
Join me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings we receive. We are grateful for all of the moving parts that it takes to make our county so wonderful. Please look after the emergency management and all of the employees looking out for the well-being in our county, law enforcement, first responders, people working within the walls of this building and beyond. We ask that you come into this room with us today and give us guidance and knowledge and wisdom as we make our decisions. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 20, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Commission meeting that was held June 20th of 2023. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item is to consider the following. First, claims and treasurers receipts.
Make a motion to approve the claim, treasure receipts, that's two seconds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Looks like a federal, uh... Federal reimbursement on prisoner housing is moving up.
Yes, forty-two thousand. That's nice. And several counties around us are contributing as well. Keith Furness. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Ruler? Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item on our agenda is adoption of Resolution Number 2023-12 to support the application of the Southeast Nebraska Development District to receive a technical assistance grant from the USDA to conduct comprehensive broadband planning, feasibility studies, and project development initiatives. I believe we started this discussion last week. And Tyler, you fixed us up a resolution?
Yes, I did.
Looks mighty, mighty well done.
Yes, I, I believe you touched on a lot of good areas there. And the, the executive director, Amber Cuskey, was very grateful for Chris's suggestion to turn my request into a resolution. And we are going to share that with our other counties in her district and challenge them to do the same.
Sounds like almost a motion, maybe?
Yes. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the Resolution Number 2023-12 to support the application of the Southeast Nebraska Development District to receive a technical assistance grant from the USDA to conduct comprehensive broadband planning, feasibility studies, project development initiatives.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
There's also a letter of support that Tammy drafted.
Next item.
Oh, that is the next item. Okay. Never mind. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ruler?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Okay, next item on our agenda, authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support for the application of the Southeast Nebraska Development District to receive a technical assistance grant from the USDA to conduct comprehensive broadband planning, feasibility studies, and project development initiatives.
Again, this is just a letter to complement the resolution. Southeast put together the letter tem- template. We customized it to fit our county and that will go along with the resolution to Amber Cuskey's office and she will share it with Southeast Nebraska Development District.
And it looks like instead of just chairman signing, it looks like all of us.
All of us, which I was about to mention as well.
Okay, so the motion should probably...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign a letter of support to complement the resolution that we just authorized in support of the application of the Southeast Nebraska Development District to receive a technical assistance grant from the USDA to conduct comprehensive broadband planning, feasibility studies, and project development initiatives.
Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion?
Brunz?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hugley? Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
We had our annual meeting this last week, Michaela and I, for West Central Nebraska Development District. And this was talked about at length. I think they have a good plan put in place to apply for these funds and get them utilized appropriately.
Great.
And the support and the participation that we get from the different Board of Commissioners and all of the residents living in this district will be very impactful for the dollar amount that Lincoln chooses to send to us. So we will be giving occasional updates and requests for participation.
Okay, sounds great. There's the resolution or the letter.
Did it already go around?
No, no, it's, it's like, George got it right there. Okay, next item on our agenda is reappointment of Jeffrey Florham to the Veteran Service Committee for a five-year term to end in 2028.
Mr. Chairman, as you well know, we have a handful of individuals that serve on the Veteran Service Committee. It is a five-year term. Mr. Florham was appointed a couple of years ago and I've had numerous conversations with him regarding the work there. He's extremely passionate about the work that they're doing. And I feel like the Veteran Service Committee has really headed in the right direction as far as the guidance that they provide to Tom Gann, our Veteran Service Officer, and that office just in general in, in serving the veterans of Lincoln County. And I, I know that Mr. Florham has been an integral part of getting that ship headed in the right direction. So you all have a, a letter in your packets from, Joe was the Secretary of the Lincoln County Veterans Committee. He also serves on the American Legion. And in accordance with state statute, the American Legion and VFW posts were contacted about this and the two others that were nominated, all strong candidates, but it was voted unanimously to throw their support behind Jeff Florham on, on the appointment. So it would be my motion that we reappoint Mr. Jeffrey Florham to the Veteran Service Committee for a five-year term to end in 2028.
Second.
And continue the work that he's doing.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I attend the, as many of the Veteran Service Committee board meetings as I can and I will echo what Chris just said. Jeffrey is very involved and brings a lot of energy and intelligence and action to that board.
Tyler, he will also have to be sworn in again, correct? So they remind them they need to swear him in by the judge.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Brunz?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. And you can make sure that he understands, knows that he is to be sworn in.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is to receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff for $2,436.95.
Chairman, I would move to receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff. The amount specified, $2,436.95. Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item is to, is the appointment of commissioner to discuss rate adjustments for court-appointed lawyers with 11th Judicial District judges. Let's get this one signed here. Okay, just a minute. Again, next item is appointment of a commissioner to discuss rate adjustments for court-appointed lawyers for the 11th Judicial District judges. Is there an attorney in the room that wishes to speak in this regard?
No.
Nope? Absolutely not, huh?
I would tell you, if you want any measure of success, you should probably congregate your efforts with some other county boards. Because individually, there's not a whole lot of anyone county here.
And the reason to have a commissioner to meet with them would be why?
Mr. Chairman, this is, as we had a few weeks ago, we had two of the judges from the 11th Judicial District come in and, and speak to us. We all, we all understand, I don't know if the public does, this is one of those large unfunded mandates that the state puts on counties as far as leaving it in the discretion of the judges to determine the pay that court-appointed attorneys receive, but that the counties pay. We don't have a say in what that dollar amount is going to be and it's one of our largest expenses here in Lincoln County. They did decide, the judges decided a few weeks ago that they were going to raise that from a hundred dollars an hour to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So that's a pretty precipitous increase in our budget that we don't have any control over. As such, and, and due to some conversations that have been had with the judges, they're open to having a group of commissioners from counties that comprise the 11th Judicial District come in and discuss how often they should reassess those pay increases for the attorneys and what that dollar amount should be. I don't know that we're going to impact the rate increase from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars this time, but having somebody at the table to at least partake in the discussion on how often that should be reassessed and what that dollar amount should be moving forward, I think is extremely important. And making sure that we have a strong voice at the table and as our deputy county attorney, Tyler Volkmer, just stated that we coalesce the other counties within the district is going to be vital to making sure that we're keeping our budgets in check. So...
Okay, sounds great. Was that the, did you say you were volunteering to be that commissioner? Is that what you said? Did I understand?
If, if that is the chairman's prerogative.
What do you think, vice chair? That could be a good choice. Who was that?
Chris Brunz.
Oh, that guy? How do you spell his last name? I think, I think he's the most passionate about it. And so therefore, I certainly would, this, this guy shouldn't let the judges. I, I will say to their defense, it has been a long, long time since those rates were changed and, and when you get that many signatures of pretty sensible folks, they're just, they're facing the reality that that's what it's going to take to get people to step forward. And unfortunately, it's not their fault either that we need those. We have to reach out to those council that many times a year now. It's just a very sad commentary on what's going on in the world with fragmented families and guardian, guardian ad litem requirements and all that good stuff. So I think that would be great if Chris would like to discuss that with them.
There was a motion, wasn't there?
Do we need a motion?
I think it's a chairman's...
Just an appointment.
Yeah, you're the boss, sir.
It's a super subcommittee.
Well, Commissioner Brunz, you are on that subcommittee. Thank you for volunteering.
Okay.
I'll reply back to Ruth Cuzick who forwarded that letter and let her know that... I'll reply back to Ruth, the bailiff, and let her know who's appointed.
Super.
I'm sure they'll be thrilled.
Okay, it is 9:17. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on June 20th, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting we held January, or June 20th of 2023. Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Ruler? Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor. Our county assessors tells us that we have none today. Thank you very much. Yeah, you took care of that the last couple of weeks, didn't you? Okay, next item, motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. County treasurer is coming forward and we have a few, correct? Couple.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning. And... Great. Good morning. Good morning, good morning. And we have two, right?
You glad to address the first one if you're ready?
Yes, please do.
I would make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the American National Red Cross for a 2018 Dodge Caravan used for charitable purposes and recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption by People's Family Health Services, North Platte, for a Toyota 2014 Sienna to be used for charitable purposes. The vehicle is used for transporting people's health staff and supplies to clinics, trainings, vendor visits, and WIC director meetings. It has been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Cuzlo. It is my motion that we also approve it.
Second.
We have a motion, any second. Any discussion? Call, please.
Ruler?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you, Julie. Er, Alex, I'm sorry. I was thinking about county assessor. Please pardon me. Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization?
No, you'll have to recess.
So at 9:20, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you. This. And this would be the last one of these.
This occurs in this particular year, correct?
Yes.
Alex, it was a nice little send off to Barb the other day. See, I'm gonna miss her when I go out to get a title because I'd walk up and she'd say, now what did we buy?
Did you have timesheets, Jerry? Didn't recall CM.
Where this might take us.
I hate it when she's nervous.
Yeah. I think it's just a little unknown carried on.
There you go, sir. Glad I could help you. You want to, what are friends for?
Okay, it is nine thirty. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider application by Nelson Acres LLC for Nelson's second administrative subdivision of property located at three seven six two nine West Nelson Road in a one A agricultural district and described as part of the southeast quarter, section eight, township ten north, range thirty-four west W of the six P M Lincoln County, Nebraska. Good morning.
Morning.
Good, good.
Judy.
So you should have received a copy of the review comments. The attached to that is a copy of the location map. It's showing you the location of where this property is. And it's, there is an existing home site in that corner of that section. And they're wanting to split off the home site from the remaining parcel. It's on the site map, but north of this proposed subdivision, there are some grain bins, some extra storage buildings that are to the north that are going to remain with the larger parcel.
I see. Okay, and which, this is section.
Section eight.
Eight, okay. I've got it right, okay.
This is the simple subdivision. It's going to split a three point oh two acre lot from a hundred and sixty acre parcel. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. It is in performance of conference of plan and the zoning regulations.
Southeast, southeast little tidbit of that, where they've got that center pivot.
Yes.
I see they're maintaining an access easement to get to those grain bins and everything.
The items, sir?
Chairman, I would move to approve the application by Nelson Acres LLC for Nelson's second administrative subdivision of property located at thirty-seven six twenty-nine West Nelson Road in an A one agricultural district and described as part of the southeast quarter of section eight, township ten north, range thirty-four west of six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Woodruff.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Rebecca, Kit got these out of order. So when you're counting them, you'll have to notice.
That's the reason you started numbering them.
Throw me in the.
I was spitting up on the back end of the line. Front end, it doesn't help much. I'm hoping our new system, we will have to have them in alphabetical order.
You're hoping you won't have to? Is that what you said?
Right now, we have to put it all in alphabetical order. It's not like in plain order. So that's.
Reason for that?
Yeah.
Who do we talk to with MIPs?
Well, they're working out.
New.
Yes, it'll be off the AS four hundred. I know.
Kind of what we're waiting on for us to be able to go virtual, isn't it?
Pardon?
Said that's kind of what we're waiting on for us to be able to go virtual, is that MIP system? That was my understanding.
It'll be a long time before it all integrated into anything else, I'm feeling.
Becky's got some.
Becky, you got any return?
It is nine thirty-five. Our next item is to discuss and consider a partnership agreement with TextMyGov. To open lines of communication between Lincoln County and citizens for the county clerk's office and other county offices. Yes, and Becky, I think maybe you had some comments you'd like to add here?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask the treasurer, Jason, and the assessor to come up because they all watched the demo with me.
Okay, so.
Don't all rush up here, people. This was, this was the demo I had asked them to do several weeks ago. You guys had asked me to maybe contact some of the departments to see who else might be interested in using this product. Like I said, I've been searching for about two years. I've done different demos. I did have IT sit in with me on several of them. This is the one we kept coming back to for the price and the ease of use and what we could do with it. The demo that he actually did for the, for the, for us on last week, it showed some parts that he hadn't showed you. There's actually a chat session, which Alex thought might be beneficial for their department. He showed Jason some things for the roads that were a little different than what you guys seen. So as far as the consensus, I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think we all thought this was a product we could use.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think the roads department, I think we could see a benefit from it just in notifications of closures, construction going on, and maybe even they do have an application for the road side of it for taking and routing complaints as well. So I think it's something we could see a pretty good benefit from.
Good to know. Thank you, Jason.
You receive some complaints out there?
We get a few from time to time.
Julie, your, your assessment of this TextMyGov?
I think it'll have some benefits. I think what I would mostly use it for is, you know, notifications like for some of the deadlines in my office. I don't know that I would be able to utilize, you know, the chat and stuff as well as they would. But there are some things, you know, if they did the keywords he showed, like somebody had a question about a homestead exemption, and then it has the automated reply pops up and directs them to either the county website or there was one even already set up with the property assessment division's website so they can get those forms, personal property. So that part of it, I think, would be nice. I think they can, you know, be directed to where they need to be without, like Becky said, without actually talking to somebody on the phone personally. But if, yeah, the notifications throughout the year, I have several different, would be nice to put those out there to everybody, I guess, as long as we can keep the public signed up for it and they don't opt out. Because that's the thing, right?
They can opt out. Yeah, they can opt out. If we push the list, which I think is what we've decided kind of amongst us, we'd like to do, they will help us market that. So before that ever happens, we're going to have to do a marketing campaign saying, you will be getting a text from this number if you choose to opt out, if you opt back in later. I mean, it's, it's, it's a marketing campaign. We're gonna. But to organically grow the list from, kind of defeats my purpose in a way because I want to use it for twenty twenty-four. This voter ID and all that, there's going to be changes that people are going to have to be aware of, so.
My thought is, I guess, to me, I hope it's going to be nice, but I hope we don't overutilize it because if everybody's phone going up three times a day with these notifications, that's going to get annoying too, and they are going to opt out. So that's why I think we got to utilize it, but some way we can kind of be careful how we utilize it too, in my opinion.
Alex, your thoughts?
Um, so I really like the option to get a link to get a form. So we do have Form Six, bill of sale. When we do our tax sale, they can get the registration form, so you don't have to call, email, just kind of legates that up. Also, from my workshop this summer, a couple of weeks ago, State D M B is considering taking away the payment for driver's licenses from my office and doing it all across the state D M B. So I'm going to have time to take these kind of stuff in my office. You can get anywhere from ten to sixteen missed calls a day in motors. And so we will have the time to actually respond over in real estate to take all the flow that'll be coming in. Most people call to see what their registration estimate's going to be. So we can do the automatic reply where it's, here's the state website, here's what your registration is going to be, estimate. So I think it'd be very beneficial to really tone down those calls and then we won't have a lot. We can kind of decrease the amount of questions that come in saying, I don't know what it is. And then a lot of people come in, I don't know the amount of my property taxes, so we can send them to Nebraska Online Taxes. Or it can be automated to a point where it says first and last name, address. If you know the parcel number, then it can be an actual chat reply, which to my knowledge goes through email. It's not like it's on your phone at all, so it's all through email. But it'll come up on the other person's phone as a text. So now that I'm going to have some downtime at the state sites to do that, I think it'd be very beneficial.
Super. Becky, I see we have two proposals here?
Right. One is just my office, the other one's for the whole county.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's.
I have a question, Becky. So when we want a notification about the public, you put it out there and it goes to everybody that's signed up. So what if, if they have opted out, can they still access it if they had a question, even if they're not receiving?
Yes, they can always opt back in or, yes. That's my understanding anyway. The places they have pushed the list, they've had very good response and very little rate. Since they've done our demo, they've done it several other places, and the opt-out rate was very low. What'd he say, two percent, three percent? I mean, it was extremely low.
So there's an implementation and a setup fee, obviously.
For the first year.
That's putting up, getting the list started, correct?
Well, it'd be basically working with us to get our responses, what we, because we're going to customize this.
And this doesn't require the purchase of any additional hardware, just the software? And it sounds like it'll help your offices reduce, you know, some time and also help the citizen get a quicker response. They won't have to leave a message and wait for a call back if you're all busy. So I feel like that's a benefit, definitely.
Like it says here, according to Pew Research Center, ninety-seven percent of smartphone owners text regularly. It's, it's, it's the future. Yep. And with the Telegraph only being three days a week now published, it's, it's, I mean, we're going to have to change the way we do business.
I don't like that. Send me a text later.
So.
Well, even fossils on this side of the table use text messages, which I never, I say I would never do.
Well, and I mean, honestly, I mean, as you guys know, most of my poll workers are older, older of age. And even, I was surprised this last time at training, we had them go on to voter registration online where they could look and see if they're about, you know, all this stuff. And they were all on their phones at training doing all that. So some of those ladies are ninety years old. So.
So there's hope for us, sir?
I guess so. And even Joe.
Joe's been pretty quiet over here. It's kind of scary.
Accessibility of government to the people is key and, you know, being able to harness this technology in an ever increasingly interconnected world is, is amazing. And so the, the cost here is extremely reasonable for us to utilize it countywide, in my opinion. And I think that we'd be foolhardy not to take advantage of this. I mean, as Kent said, I mean, even he texts. So I think that this is a worthwhile tool that we should utilize.
I, I would agree. I'm, I'm open for a motion and I'm guessing that we're all thinking not just the clerk's office, but the entire county is what most of us are leaning towards?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion and we can discuss at that point. But Mister Chairman, I would move that we enter into a partnership agreement with TextMyGov to open lines of communication between Lincoln County and citizens of Lincoln County.
to open lines of communication between Lincoln County and citizens of Lincoln County for the clerk's office and all other county offices in the amount of, looks like this is a two-year contract, the first year being $12,000 for the initial startup costs and $8,000 a year thereafter.
Second.
That's only one of the... The other one's $5,000.
But I'm making a motion for this one.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Becky, thank you for all your work on this. I know that this is something that you've invested a lot of time and research in. And thank you guys for participating and your input. Is this, and this is an annual contract, that we'll be able to withdraw from if it turns out not to be?
After the initial two years, we're pretty much locked in, but then it's a 60-day written notice. And like I said, I did contact the people that they gave me for the references. And like I said, I've never, I mean, I was kidding them on the call and said, "How much did you bribe those people to say all those nice things about you?" I mean, and they were all very complimentary to what the product was and their service.
Becky, did you show this to Tyler?
Yes.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? This is for the option, the proposal for across the entire county. Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Sorry I had to force you up here. Not really.
It will be the last time you're voluntold to participate in something.
As far as I know, too, I mean, they have options for, they work with other governmental entities, so if other, like registered deeds, and I mean, as it grows, I mean, I think this is gonna be a very good base to start with, but there is options to add other departments on to.
Isn't gonna regret supporting this.
He can turn it off.
Does it vape out all the curse words? It looks like it.
Yeah, you're gonna get the negatives no matter, no matter what, so. And you do a good job feeling those.
Becky, would you check what your options are? Sure, I got that taken care of correctly.
Gee, I really appreciate you looking out for me like that.
Ah, good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Brandon.
I don't know the name of the company. It is 9:50. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider sending a representative to the Ag and Economic Development Summit on August 8 and 9, 2023. Am I understanding this as in Carney, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I understand that we have two individuals that have interest in attending this. I'd like to open that up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Governor's Annual Ag and Economic Development Summit. Ms. Schertz and Carney. I was planning on attending this. I had a couple of conversations with members of the Governor's team, asking me if I would attend. So I was planning on attending this anyway, and I know that Commissioner Ruler has interest as well as we both serve on West Central Nebraska Development District, and then I serve on the Chamber Development Corporation Board of Directors. In my opinion, I think it's key that we have individuals from Lincoln County being able to represent us and have a voice at the summit and get the valuable information that's there. I know that Commissioner Ruler asked for this to be placed on the agenda just so we could make sure that we had support from the board for us attending.
That is a true statement. Chris said everything that I would've said, so.
Okay, so do we need a motion in this regard?
I don't think so.
We'll just. A form down there, so I'd say we. I'd say it's, sounds like it would be a benefit of the information and the contacts that would be made and bring back to Lincoln County. So I am going to grant that you two attend that conference.
Very good.
Could do.
Thank you.
You bet.
Clark just told me she will be one of the presenters this year.
Yep.
So Lincoln County will be there. RMV, that is the company. Who's the guy, RMV Construction?
Having two of us there is gonna be a good thing because it's gonna be action-packed. And I don't know how one person can absorb them. So it should be a good time.
Are you gonna do the tour the day, the first day of the dairy?
In fact, Chris Bukke with the Dairy Association just tried calling me.
When I ran them a P S building, they have a dairy that we deliver to frequently, and I got to know those folks really well. And they are going to be there. And I loved going there. It's such a well-run, immaculate, a great business model.
It's a reason why.
Yeah. I agree. We would like to have a presentation done.
If you agree, I'll just have Becky get something. Good morning, gentlemen.
Maybe they're here to answer all our questions.
Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman. What is it?
Just read the note and you'll, you'll understand.
The interest is piqued. For that amount, I would be too.
It's not something that I've seen before.
I think we're back to the official's time. Do you? Hold that back then. I'll get back to you here in just a minute. We got a couple of interesting leaders over here. Okay. I ain't heard that. Did you get the sheriff straight down? Joe. Can you send a bigger team? So I think they said they would address that. Oh, no. Trust me with it.
Have Melissa delivering it to the next meeting. Mr. Chairman, while we have a minute, I'd like to give a shout out to all the hardworking individuals that put together a very strong and fantastic Nebraska Land Day celebration in the past couple of weeks to include law enforcement personnel and make sure that it was a safe and enjoyable time for everybody.
I think that is a very good point to make. I think the rodeo committee chairman, Jeff Morris, made that comment. It's an army of people that put that together. Spouses, families, there's a lot of time donated in that event. And it's great that we have such great participation from county sheriffs, the North Platte Police Department that makes it a very safe and fun, enjoyable family event.
Yeah.
I agree with you. It is 10:00 a.m. We will receive bids for a multi-use building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices. Commissioner Hugley, you had a comment you wanted to make? Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation. Somebody called and I think it was RMV Construction, I think, out of Carney. But I'm not sure they were gonna be able to get a sealed bid here in time. Asked if they could send it electronically and you could send. I said you can send it. I don't know if we'll accept it or not, but we won't if you don't send it. So having said that, we have received one in the clerk's office. You might ask Tyler. I think we have something in there about any and all minor informalities, but as to whether or not he wants us to read that or not. If there is that, based on his maybe comments.
I've not read the pledge for proposal. I assume it has something in there about money. Do we have more than one bid?
No.
Okay, well.
Be okay if I have a look through this while you're doing your checking?
Question ponder would be if we, Becky, if we think it would serve us better to delay this and go through the two publications again?
Just have to start over with that. Question is, will we put in a bid? There's one thing about states that you suggested, another. So to my point, you might have to just reject it all.
I think it has remained sealed.
Okay.
It has remained sealed until it's open, so.
Okay.
I don't personally have an issue with it, but.
I understand. Okay, so since we do not have any sealed bids, we would, do we open this up for bidding again? It's a question I have.
Yeah.
Definitely. At this time, as we've done in other departments, like motor vehicle purchases, for example, I know of one possible local contractor that I might be able to generate some interest in a bid. I'm not sure they were aware, and there's probably others as well. So I'll do a little legwork to try at least contact one person and, or one company that I'm aware of construct these type of buildings and see if we can get, if we set a new date for bidding. And maybe others have contacts? They could encourage?
I did receive some phone calls that I forwarded to you. So I know there's interest.
Right.
I just don't know, there were some time constraints. Everybody's busy.
Yep.
So I do think if we posted again and do, give them a little more cushion and maybe include some more detailed specs with the building.
Well, I was gonna ask Commissioner Hugley that very question because, Joe, was this that you've taken to sign and put together? Was this available?
Yes, but that's not, it doesn't have the information really they want to. The only information I put on there to them was, you're just gonna have to.
The only information I put on there to them was, you're just going to have to itemize what you bid and list it out because it's hard to compare apples to apples. I didn't say put in such and such. It was a kind of a no cost thing. I just made a general thing that they could note what they were bidding, so.
And that was the feedback that I got from a couple of the contractors that talked to me was without specs, it's hard to give, you know, the bids that we got weren't going to be apples to apples because everybody has different ideas on what they would do. So maybe a little more information or a little better communication, just saying, do it the most economical way you can. I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I'm not sure I do. I probably don't. But Joe, to that, the basic drawing and description of what we want, that defines the size of the building, the height of the sidewall, all the basic things that would...
I think it's got, I think we've got the sizes shown by typical layout. Yes, some material called out. Sticking might have a section through it that shows the construction of the building and maybe a bidding schedule on the frames and stuff. So there's general information there, but there's, for example, I know we call to have, you know, some heating and cooling units. It's not specifically called out. Somebody's in that business, they certainly know how to figure that. And they would usually have that subcontractor bid that, just list what he did, but that's... Which any of those subcontractors, in my opinion, that we have locally would be good at if they chose.
Yeah, I think time was the biggest constraint.
Yeah.
Regardless, we have one entity that is interested in bidding and just don't have time to get a sealed bid into us. So it'd be who of us to go ahead and... ...bid with us.
How much time do you need to have to get proper notification to set a time to date?
They just did all those...
Yeah, I think so.
I got it right here, Becky. For Tuesday edition, let's see, edition Tuesday, deadline is the prior Thursday by noon. For Thursday, it's Monday by noon. And for Saturday, it's Wednesday by noon.
Do you have anybody ask you locally? Brandon about this project? No. I'm not sure that we had great awareness of, you know, corners of the construction community, maybe. And to Michael's point on it, I'm sure this... Also played in this. Construction season, so people are busy. All committed.
So do we need to extend this out or are we wanting to get some construction done before winter?
I would propose that we advertise as necessary, the necessary multiple postings, and try it again. And in the interim, maybe some of us can reach out to some local contractors and say, hey, heads up, maybe you missed this in the paper.
With the last project I was involved in, I did email the notice to every contractor probably within 100 miles, and I still have that list in my computer, so I could do that again.
That'd be great.
Because I think, like you said, it's busy construction season. A lot of people don't have time to go hunting for these notices, so I can do that.
Given how the agenda item is written, are we able to schedule a date and time?
I think we need to put it on the agenda for next week to set a new date to accept bids. And I did have Construction Network picking up last week, so, I mean, it is out on some of, at least one of the networks.
Okay, super. So we will have that for an agenda item next week, correct? Okay, super. Thank you. Well, the building's still in hold, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Get it done. Can't argue with state statute. You can, but you... I don't know that you will. No, it's that clear. There ought to be some cleanup language that'd be like encrypted and delivered to the official. Maybe a lot of talking, like, see if we can put something together.
Brian, when did you slip it in?
Did you get past the sheriff? Chief Deputy, security, all.
Yeah, I heard they were late too, so I thought...
I gotta tell you, Johnson Road is looking really good. The work that you guys have done. Gotten a lot of compliments.
Yeah, definitely tunes the landscape.
Just a smidge. Maybe they can take a look, see if Weaver Hills and Weaver Heights.
I also received a compliment on that, and I also received a comment from somebody in Weaver Hills and Weaver Heights. Just saying.
Did Chesky's wingback moorean? This one will stretch a relative, would welcome that machine. There's probably several, actually, but I know of one.
It's a little different this year than last year.
Yep. Rain will do that for you. Becky, this is annual. I know these. Annual. Thank you.
How would you know that the chairman of the legislature was going to get the more questions?
I would expect nothing less.
You wouldn't think you'd have to work down here and think, oh, man, but times you do.
Jerry, I never doubted you. That's why I was asking.
I thought we seemed to win the round.
Should probably share some of that positive feedback with the guys that were out there because they got a lot of...
I know.
Other communication, too.
On purpose, by design.
Thank you.
Is that all of the ambulance contracts? We get them all?
Yeah. It took a little work, but I got them all.
Thank you.
Jason? Jason, I have a question. First of all, I'm not very smart. I don't understand what oversized gravel is, and I especially don't understand when it says one-inch gravel. This is from Crowe. It's minus isn't even gravel.
Well, yeah, it's...
Pretty big stuff.
Some of it's a more...
How does it just happen?
More screen deal, that's just bigger stuff.
So what is oversized, what is oversized gravel? It's... It's what? Oh, it's not expensive enough for mud rock.
It could be that...
Oh, yeah, it is. It could be mud rock. I'm sorry. Okay, it is 10:15. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider advertising for an independent contractor for pest control with an emphasis on prairie dogs. We have a second item here as well, but this is what we will start with. And the vice chairman of this board, who happens to be the lead on the AdHoc Subcommittee for the Wildlife and Pest Control with Emphasis on Prairie Dogs, I will turn that over to that individual, Commissioner Williams.
You started all this and then you gave it to me. All right, well, we needed to, we needed to have a starting point for redefining how we structure our pest control. Again, with the emphasis, as the chairman says, with prairie dog, which has just been a recent development. Essentially, Chairman and I recognize that first step would be twofold, and that is to, as we, as we see how this evolves, how this is going to look, we should probably consider two different approaches. One being to solicit and see if there are any independent contractors with appropriate endorsements, equipment, so forth, that would be, would be interested in doing contract work on behalf of the county and through individual landowners. Although we're both a little skeptical because of the liability and some other things that we may or may not get any interest, but in the, in the consideration of being thorough, we think we should put that out there as an option and see if we're maybe overlooking some vendor or vendors or individuals who say, well, I've got a Category 14 commercial license, by the way, and so I do qualify to do something like that, and I'm interested. Depending on the rate of pay, and we would ask them, of course, to set, to define their rates for, for us, so we could consider whether that's a viable option. And not really wanting to move on to an item, I guess, but we'd have a little bit different approach with the independent contractor versus the second portion of this, which we can talk about here in a minute. But to Jerry and I, we just believe that in order to, to see how we shape this, we'll know that we, we put that feeler out there in the market. And again, we're probably skeptical that there's any independent contractors that would want to do it, but maybe we're missing something. So we put something out there for this portion as consideration. Nothing says we have to move forward with either one, is how we define how we're going to do this, but...
And, and this has all been precipitated because a couple of weeks ago, we declined to renew our contract with USDA for pest control. And it was stated that at that point in time, that was in no way a reflection on the work that had been done the last year or so, especially in the prairie rodent control management program that we instituted, put in place. No way does it reflect that, that process that we were involved with. We were concerned with the amount of money we were sending to USDA and the red tape that came with that.
Correct.
Working with the federal government. I did have a conversation with the counterpart in Sheridan County. They had some of the similar concerns we had in regards to the amount of money that was being asked from USDA. And it bolstered my commitment or my thought that we should probably have this be controlled by Lincoln County in one way or another. And Kent has described a couple of options that we have thought might be acceptable. So I would welcome any comment from the rest of you on the board in regards to how you would like to pursue this particular...
Chairman, would you, would you indulge us to move on to the next item for discussion first?
Is that okay? Can we discuss the next item? This is the second phase of the same item.
Listened at the same time, sure. Okay, regarding the second portion of this, where we would advertise, were we promoting the idea of advertising for part-time seasonal employee for pest control? Again, with the emphasis on prairie dog. The rationale behind that is that we know we've been a cost share with Dawson County for a number of years, and I know historically, long before I was on this board, Mr. Hugley was appropriately skeptical of the cost of this program and for whether we were getting our value for the money. And in fact, some of the annual reporting maybe gave us pause there. So at any rate, because it is a kind of a seasonal thing and, and to the fact that we've spent a little bit of time looking at our spin on it and believe that we have a fairly confident, common belief that we could perhaps retain not, maybe just not one, but two part-time seasonal employees who would have the flexibility to serve individually or jointly if necessary, but not really, we wouldn't be beholden to have individuals on the payroll year-round. And, and to the flexibility of it on their behalf, if one of them who was qualified and had the right, for example, for a period of time, the other one we could call and they could clock in and go through the treatment or inspection or whatever required. So when we took a look at the $42,000 that we have to start with, that's being budgeted to keep this program rolling, we were comfortable that this option, which we fully expect is more likely that we'll solicit, we will receive some applicants, qualified applicants, that it's a better viable option because if you break it down, we think we'd have sufficient funds to, to retain that person. There'll be some purchases that will have to be addressed and/or demands that will have to be met with the use of a vehicle, of course, and four-wheeler and baiting system for that four-wheeler and some other, some other things. But we think it's a good starting point. And until we have, and because the only way to do this is to not just simply say, well, we're gonna, we're just gonna hire this person, the right way to do it is to advertise it and see who's serious about it, puts in the applications, and then we consider our options there. And if we keep our, if we keep the option open with an emphasis on the seasonal employee part-time, there's, we see no reason we couldn't, if we had two or more qualified people, we couldn't contract with all, one or all, or multiple, put it that way. So again, the reason they're on here is two separate things is we just don't want to look back in a year or two and say, well, we found out that such and such contractor, Chemtrol, or somebody out of Kansas City, for example, which is a long reach, that's not really appropriate for this application, but it's an example of a regional company that goes out and does vegetation control. So we may have overlooked somebody that said, oh, if they're going to do that through the county, we'd be interested in... the county, we'd be interested in soliciting business." Just like, you know, an HVAC company here in town might say, "Oh, yeah, we'll give you a rate. Please call us." So, again, that's why Chairman and I decided that we should put it to the full board to discuss and consider both of those items as separate. So that we're defining that we're going to take a look at this. If nothing comes of it, fine, we just move on to the other. But we both believe that we can advertise them simultaneously and then choose the best option once we see what's out there.
Tyler, would you agree that that could be advertised as two different options?
Yeah, just because you solicit the application doesn't mean you have to hire somebody.
Another question I have for you, if we do have an independent contractor, is that, would that individual or company be responsible for their own liability insurance, or would that fall underneath the umbrella of the county?
Well, they have their own insurance and a lot of it.
That was what we suspected.
We assumed that, and that's why we questioned whether it was worth, but at least we'll know.
I appreciate you guys taking a look at this, and we do got to get the ball rolling on it. It's my understanding Dawson County just canceled their agreement as well. In the interim, because this may take a little bit of time to advertise and for us to consider and select somebody, in the interim, am I correct in my understanding that USDA still provides services to people at a fee here in Lincoln County if there's...
Well, I guess that's a difference of opinion. I guess you have to ask USDA. They insisted at this meeting that they're no longer accessible, but that's for them to speak to. But the reality is that they pretty much put their feet to the fire and said, "Take it or leave it," and give us the $42,000 contract. And I didn't see any flexibility in their approach. And quite honestly, in the past, there has been some discussion because Commissioner Hughley led that and challenged their price. So, with that said, I don't know that they gave us a lot of options, either take it or leave it. None of us were really that comfortable with what we were getting for the money, with the cost share with Dawson. And I can't speak to what Dawson's opinion is on it, but apparently they have some strong consideration of going a different route as well. There's never, it's never a perfect world when you have to make a transition like this. And I, it's a personal opinion, I don't think USDA was real helpful, and I think they were counting on the fact that we would be willing to grit our teeth and revamp the way we're doing this. But with the new emphasis on the prairie dog program, which is a very important portion of keeping viable, real estate viable, that we're expecting tax money on it, and in the same vein that we do with noxious weed, if we can put together a more effective program that reaches more producers, and to some degree, obviously, we'll be subsidizing this, but recognizing as a full board that we're also will be looking at a fee structure to recapture portions of that overhead. It's not going to be a profit center by any means at all. But if you balance the good stewardship of taxpayers today, it's the same function, basically, of what noxious weed does when you've got four responsible landowners that pay their taxes and treat their own weed issues, and you've got the fifth across the fence that's not. And so, you know, you don't want to fully 100% subsidize that problem, but you recognize that in order to help those neighbors mitigate that, perhaps the county's going to have to step in and be a participant in that cost. So, but how we define that, ladies and gentlemen, you have to be determined as far as fees or recovering fees. But one thing in particular I would say is that once we move forward and we've got people that have identified that they want, they have interest in working for us or with us as a contractor or as an employee, we will establish some fee structure. Just like we do when we go in and spray a property for muscil, for example.
There's a possibility for some recovery of fees, but the main emphasis, I think, when we think back to when we rejected the USDA contract was, we anticipate being more effective than we were than... But to address your point, Chris, yes, that contract ends the end of this month. We'll obviously have a little gap before we have our program in place, and that's unfortunate. But we will, we'd like to get this expediated so that we can begin this new department within the county. So, I would welcome your folks' thoughts.
I don't know that we'll get any independent contractors just because of the financial cost of liability.
We don't expect, we don't expect that.
But I think it's probably prudent on our part to put it out for both options and advertise, you know, request for both, because you never know. We're not clarifying it, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Is there an estimated startup cost if we actually would have part-time people? I know you mentioned four-wheelers, vehicles. Have you put any kind of numbers together to see what that'll be?
Not, not any numbers to that. I can tell you that based on what we've seen as historic reports, the $42,000 budget and the treatment time that has been in the past, we look at that, it would, on a 2020 and 50-hour, where did I write that down?
About it.
Essentially, about a half-time person could probably do what we've done to this point, although our goal in life is to get better and expand what we're doing. Think on a part-time seasonal basis, you know, somewhere around 1,000 to 1,100 hours of time, times, let's say, 20 bucks an hour, if you want to throw an example out. So, there you've got 20,000. That leaves you 22,000, you know, give or take, for either acquiring a four-wheeler and a pickup or, you know, let me say this about the four-wheeler on the short term. We've got nothing but cooperative lean from Noxious Weed Department, and they have, in fact, not only a four-wheeler, but they have track for Rangers. And nothing says that we don't lean on them a little bit this first budget year, because I fully expect we would. The biggest, probably, honestly, the biggest challenge would be making a pickup available. I know I've talked to Jason at Rhodes, and they really don't have any spares at this time. So, our next plan, and I think Jerry's in charge of this, we're probably going to steal the keys to one of the sheriff's pickups.
Kent, would a Dodge Charger work? I'm not sure.
Prairie dogs are fast.
The good thing is, you know, you make a good point. First year, there's going to be some startup expenses. And that would have to be budgeted in. But that would only be, first year, those would be long-term use items, so that's something that had to be worked out. But we fully believe that in the long term, we will have a much more effective program, and we will save the county some.
Just clarifying, a potential part-time seasonal employee, would they fall underneath the weeds department for supervision and...
Not necessarily.
That was our first inclination.
Not necessarily.
But that's not written in stone, but they have to be that. Jason's expressed some interest in utilizing, you know, we could probably find 10 places for this individual, but when they're not doing pest control. But at first glance, we talked about a cost share on labor with Rhodes and the weed department as far as a secondary sprayer. And we don't see those numbers yet, Michaela, from Noxious Weed, to see if they can extrapolate from what they're doing today, the man-hours that are being spent, if they can, in fact, if they do, in fact, have the ground rig, that a full-time person that they cost shared with pest control could run that truck and help us recover part of this overhead.
We had a board meeting at Weeds last week, and they are on-board and supportive. As you know, this is Todd's busiest timing for spraying. And him and Jody are working on putting that file together. I saw the bare bones of it. So, it's a work in progress. And he is working on getting that, too. There was a lot of unknowns, like with the whole program, but I think he had a good handle on what you were looking for.
And again, you know, and again, that's the other reason that we kind of, Jerry and I were hopeful that we could make an analysis of adding his sprayer that would simply complement our need for this other part-time person, but not necessarily be, you know, the emphasis on how we structured this. That way, if we do end up going with part-time seasonal and we end up with one or two, maybe three qualified candidates, that's great. We just simply budget their time to what we have, we can afford this first go-around. But, you know, the four-wheeler, obviously, we fully intend to lean on Noxious Weed in the short term to share some of the equipment they have. And as you've indicated and Todd's indicated in their board, they're okay with that.
They are, yes.
You know, the baiting, the baiting unit that goes on there, they're $600 bucks and, you know, takes a little time to get one, but, you know, green grass everywhere, you're going to start prairie dogs more in the fall, October, maybe. But at any rate, you know, it's a work in progress. And not to belabor the point, but, you know, the timing is such that USDA didn't seem to want to negotiate a different number, so we got to do the best we can and move forward.
Yeah. Tammy, in that regard, if this board should decide to advertise for both of those potential employees, is that something that you can do care of?
So, I understand the need that we have as far as finding somebody and getting this going. I suppose a concern that I would have and a question that I would pose is how much time do you think the committee would need to kind of figure out the organizational structure and who this person brings to? Because I don't know if it's something that we should want to do as far as bringing on a potential county employee and not have really figured out who they report to, who they receive, you know, their marching orders from.
It's no different than the Rhodes, it answers to us, doesn't it?
Well, I understand. That was clearly defined and everything else is for the scope of the job description.
Ultimately, they answer to us. And we can further define after we find viable candidates and recognize that we want them, one or more. We can identify someone, and we can delegate that oversight to anybody we choose.
Or even one of the commissioners that the chairman might designate.
So, I don't see that as a big challenge. First thing is to find viable candidates.
But, yeah, our thought was if we got some candidates, then we could kind of decide how this needed to be structured. And it's going to take us a month or two to do so, but which is going to be a little bit of a, a little bit of a problem because of budget season, but that's why we need to get this going.
I just, in my career, working, interviewing, hiring people, I just think that we might run into some difficulties if we're not able to put out a thorough job description and truly be able to articulate what it's going to look like for a potential candidate. That way, we're setting the expectations for that individual and being fair with them. And I don't know that that would take too much time to get that organized.
I can write that up for Tammy if that's what you want.
It would be helpful to have a job description and...
We weren't just going to put a generic feeler out, kind of the obvious in my mind, but there was no point in us getting into the weeds on that until we'd sat down with Tyler and said, "Okay, this is what we identify as we wanted to get to say." And then he's going to help steer us and say, "Well, you're right on base here, but you're not here," before we put anything in the paper.
So, it sounds to me like if we approve this idea, you, Tyler, working with Tammy, how we structure this.
I don't see that as a big challenge.
Okay, super.
We can define that. We can go into some things on the, and Tyler, this is where Tyler weighs in heavily. We'll identify the, which we already talked about, is probably going to shoot down the option or the idea of it. The liability is a huge thing. We all know that. So, that portion, I mean, we'll do our very best to define the breadth of it, responsibilities, reports, all of it above, you know, the proper endorsements, which are commercial pesticide applicator licenses with category 14 at minimum and so forth. And again, for the seasonal as well.
Is that okay? For as long as we get all that hashed out before we bring somebody on.
Trust me, it'll be in there.
It was for conversation's sake, just to make sure that we're not shooting off the head with this.
I don't know what else to add, folks.
Maybe a motion?
You ready for a motion? Chairman, I would note that we would proper detail on identification of duties required in that once that document is refined and defined with the assistance of our county attorney, that we advertise, solicit and advertise for two different positions for consideration. Number one being an independent contractor for pest control with an emphasis on prairie dogs. And the second being an advertisement for receiving interest and applications for part-time seasonal employee for pest control with the same emphasis on prairie dog control. With the notation that we will specify basic requirements of quality, qualification for application. I don't know that we need to put a close on it, just get it in the publications and start seeing what kind of feedback we get.
Great.
That's a long motion, but that's it.
Very good motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. Excuse me, any other discussion?
Becky, as far as budget, we can just leave this, because we already have a line item in our budget for pest control. We should be able to leave that amount and continue to budget that. And however it's defined, as far as a department, if Weeds takes it over, the supervision aspects or if they report directly to this board, we're not going to have any issues with that, correct?
Would we be advertising a pay range for this individual in the paper? Or not necessarily in the paper, but at least have it defined when they come in.
Well, independent contractor, I would say no.
Right, but for the employee?
I think we were comfortable putting a base pay on it and range, as you say, depending on experiences, is a typical consideration.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? And once we have this kind of put together, we'll meet again and make sure that we've covered these aspects.
We're comfortable with that. But again, I think it's critical, and I planned all along to help, or have Tyler help us make sure we're advertising this in a proper fashion with correct definitions and explanatory enough that we've defined what we expect.
Sounds great. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Paul, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you for leading and working on that. I'll look forward to...
Yeah, we'll get...
Meshing our minds again here in the very near future. Okay, next agenda item, employee recognition for years of service to Lincoln County. This is a fun sort of, I get to take part in. Are you going to take some pictures, Tammy?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four here with me today. First is, I'll start with five years of service for Tyler Young, hands at the road department. Started work six twenty-five of twenty eighteen. And since you got him out working, I assume he wanted to stay working and not be here to receive this.
Good for him, right?
You will take this to him, will you not?
That's a good for him.
And tell him we appreciate his years of service. And another one for is Mr. Randy Bullish, also worked fifteen years of service. Started work in twenty oh eight, six seventeen, twenty oh eight. So again, if you would please present that to Randy and tell him that we appreciate his years of service. Okay, next, since he just walked in the door. Cheryl O, ten years of service.
Yes.
And I think this is a great honor that I enjoy presenting this to you. And if you would, except our appreciation for your years of service.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to get a picture.
June, which is our busiest month for accounts payable, and God bless her, she stayed. And was she watching her out for the first two weeks? I almost cried a lot, let me tell you.
Cheryl, we're glad you stayed around.
Okay, last but not least, I have a ten years, years of service for Mr. Brett Schmidt.
Deputy.
Deputy, started April one of twenty thirteen. It pulled it. I'll be making some comment in that regard. I'll go out since your bosses are right here.
I'll just say I'd rather be working with these guys the last ten years than finding these people.
Very nice. Very nice.
It's a great honor that I present you with this certificate for your years of service. Even having to work with those two. No, I'm sure it's a great honor.
Thank you.
That's why I got raised in, I don't...
He was looking for the rest of the day off.
Forget the charger comment. Okay. Next item on our agenda is, do we have a need for a closed session? We do have need for a closed session. So with that, I would welcome an, a motion to go into closed session.
Chairman, I'd move to go into closed session for the need for discussion of collective bargaining.
And who should, and we have a second. Who should be in the room?
Uh, you five.
And you... Okay, sounds good. So at ten forty-eight, we will go into closed session. Oh, we need a roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call please.
Weems.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
So at ten forty-eight, we'll go into closed session with the board members, Deputy County Attorney Tanner Volkmer and Sheriff Kramer and Deputy Sheriff Kramer.
He's not hiding anything.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, so you come out of closed session.
Aye.
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 Aye, so eleven oh seven, we will come back into open session. Next item on our agenda is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. And Joe, did you have something you wanted to discuss?
Well, I just say I was gonna see if you maybe you could address a little bit our block safety thing.
That was a pretty large claim, and that's why I put a note on it that you might want to discuss with us. It's one of those things we've put off till the end of the year to make sure we have the money. It's a, it's the same system that the police department put up as far as the cameras around town. And we discussed for a long time about tying in with that system. Because not only with North Flott, but it's with some other agencies. But anyway, it's a, it runs into some money, and we didn't look at bidding on that because there's only one system that will tie. It is the system it is, so as far as the mechanics of it and what we can accomplish with it, it's a, it's kind of a manpower multiplier because it's I is 24/7 where we can't help. But how it benefits the agency and how it kind of works, Lieutenant Newton did all the conversation with the supplier, and he knows the system inside and out. I can keep talking and confuse this all, but he'll get you down to the nuts and bolts of what we're gonna accomplish with this.
I think the biggest misnomer is that somebody's sitting there watching these cameras 24/7, and nobody is. What you do is develop a hot list. If you have a stolen car or trailer, you enter that information into the system, and if one of their cameras hits that, then it sends out an alert to the officers that are on duty. It tells you where it's at, which direction. But there's nobody sitting there watching what time Joe gets home. I mean, really, the police department can cite case after case on stolen cars. A young man that was just sentenced in District Four for manslaughter, they figured out where he ditched the gun using their camera system. They went in after the fact, typed in the plate number, so they knew what part of the county he'd been in. They used that in their interviews. It's a great investigative tool.
And it's tied in with the, with the national crime database, so if there's a vehicle that was stolen in California that's in the database, it's got it in the computer, and it runs through one of our villages where she saw the work of these things.
Did you see it, sir? Who's it went through?
See, it's tied into, and not only that, is when we enter warrants, we try, they're trying to put cars associated in with it. So we have anywhere from five to 700 warrants depending on the date, and if we can get those cars, that's really gonna get our warrants down, additionally amber alerts, it'll get on all of those things from anywhere in the country. And so it's, it's a super system.
And this, this amount is an annual fee?
The $16,100 was set up because they come out and mount them for you. Charge next year, I think it says $15,600 or something. That is a recurring annual fee.
And this ties into what the city police department is using currently?
It's the exact same system.
So you guys can punch in a hot list of license plates, or anybody, any agency nationwide can?
Any agency that runs block will have it in there, and their plate will hit on our system and vice versa. If we have a stolen and it goes down to Houston and hits, there it is. Because it's running through that national crime information.
So, I mean, I can, I can clearly see the benefit in certain scenarios, but I'm curious, is there any scenarios where there's been abuse of this at all that we know of?
They're outlined in the, the policy, and I type our policy to match the police department so that we're both on the same wavelength. Their guys don't get on our system and do something weird, but it addresses officers typing in girlfriends' plates or something.
That's, that's a concern that I have, is the individual liberty thing.
And there's an audit process right now. Chief, or Deputy Chief Allison runs an audit. If somebody's typing in a plate, they have to associate a case number. So even our stolen cars or suspicious activity has a case number attached to it. So you're not just sitting there running random plates. You have to have cases.
The Crime Commission did a year or two ago because of that, tightened up what law enforcement can put in and type in now. Just like you said, you had something you want to find out about a girlfriend that comes back, you know, to try to cut down on that stuff. So across the state, they really have had their hands screwed down as to what they can use that kind of stuff.
So I understand that the need for additional information to tie it to a case number, but what does the audit process look like? What, are they doing 10%, 15%, 3% scrutinizing that?
You think he does something weekly, so it's all in there. Everything they put in there goes into the audit, the way I understood it.
I do the audits for the Nebraska Crime Justice Information System, which is pretty much the same thing. Our guys can run plates on their laptops in the field. I go in there, they make me do an audit once a year, and I run down, randomly pick a deputy and look at who he's running, and then see why.
I think there's this monthly on this, isn't there?
I just type the policy Thursdays.
I mean, like I said, clearly understand the benefit in certain scenarios, but this technology is, I mean, it's awesome in its power, and that gives me pause from, from, you know, that libertarian vein that kind of runs through. It's like, holy crap, what can truly be done this far?
This is a little more restrictive than the Nebraska because they have to attach a case number. With the other system, we don't. I can see a license plate on the road, I can run it. If they come back and ask me why, I need to be able to explain why I ran that plate.
Yeah, but I get that, like, you have to see it in that regard. It's not something that you can go and retroactively type in and collect that data retroactively on something.
Sheriff Kramer, you said one of the reasons you postponed this decision was to see how the budget was. This fits in your budget that you have remaining?
Yeah, I think we ended up with $180,000 left over, yeah.
We've been looking at it since February. We, we've started this process and following what the police department's doing and making sure. But they're back at our last conference, we spoke to Buffalo County Sheriff, and these things work. They're really helping us.
Oh, one other nice thing, you know, like in the villages, we have a burglary in the middle of the night, and you can put in a parameter from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., what vehicles were moving in town. And, you know, not that many. We can see who was there. We picked that up off of a door cam of some criminal mischief that happened in Maxwell. Y'all live in next by, because that's kind of a common thing the guys don't do anymore. Go around the neighborhood and see my door cam. And we pick some footage up there, which, you know, in the middle of the night, that's not the best footage, and of course, it doesn't do what this will do there.
How far back has the data held?
I think that's one of the parameters that you can set. I think the city's was 180 days. But the data that that would store, I think is way, I think that's.
Preservant cost.
Yeah, exactly.
So the $15,000 annual, is that per rod on how many cameras you put in?
Correct. You have to buy a minimum of five. The city's got 20-somes, they're paying over 70.
Over 70,000. So you're, you're, you've recognized, how many cameras are you gonna start with?
We, or we want to purchase five. Four that are set, they'll come out and mount them, and they won't move. And the fifth one will be one that, based on investigative purposes, we could go move. We can move it to a problem area.
Oh, I see. That makes a lot of sense there.
Like the fires we had up north, it would have been good to have a camera up north, but we can go move it to drop of the hat.
Yes. Okay.
South Mulholland Drive would be a good place for one once in a while.
So that's in the form of a claim unless I, I'm gonna start this thing around, and I'm gonna sign it, so hopefully we get three signatures. How's that?
I think you got a good chance you'll receive three. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this regard.
And all of this stuff, as you look at it, you think, oh, the counter, and it's so expensive, and the cost never goes away. You know, it's like all of our support for all the different programs at the jail, at the sheriff's office, you see those come through. If you don't have the, the support, you don't pay for it, you don't get the equipment, so.
And if it allows you to get done or accomplish with less boots on the ground, that's a, that's a win too. We have to factor that in.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is an eyeball multiplier here.
Yeah. And there's reason to have an eye on what's happening around.
What's that?
There is a reason to have a trice eye.
A lot of bad stuff goes on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
A lot of bad stuff we never even know about.
Oh, we don't need to put one of these cameras at Sioux Lookout, by the way. I'll keep an eye out for you.
You're watching?
I'll keep an eye out for you.
Just check for swarming, just for it's like, I'm glad you did a good camera in the 80s at Sioux Lookout.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
See you across the street in a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Do I move right into this recess now?
No, haven't had a chance to get caught or set up here.
Makes sense to take a 30-minute lunch break right now. Just getting going and then.
At 11:20?
I don't know that that makes sense.
That's a good question to ask.
We just have a handful, because we've got to go to jail.
Or should we go do our inspection and be back in 30 minutes? This number will help us decide.
I have a, if you're hungry.
Well, I have, I have one.
I'm prepared. Do you know how many we've got ready to review? We're trying to determine whether we want to go to jail or come back. Well, we gotta leave the jail today, so.
It is about lunchtime over there. What'd you say?
She has about 100 of them for you, but you don't have to do them all today.
Well, that'll.
She's got the best food, $2.19 a bitch right there.
There you go.
So what do you think? What's the, what's the?
My request is we do the jail inspection, take a quick lunch, and then let's knock out a bunch of these. That would be my request. Does that work for you?
I'm just not gonna, at least the easy ones. Charity went through them. I don't know. I'm gonna have to ask the listener.
But I'm one of fives.
We're, I mean, obviously, it's the last week, so we're very busy, so my staff is not gonna be able to be over here. That'd be me. If we absolutely have a question, we either can have to wait on it, or if they're not busy with the customer, we can.
So.
So, but I think Charity went through them, so hopefully these will be working for charity.
I mean, here comes Miss Charity right now.
Did you go through those? I didn't get over there Friday. She said she's got 100 ready, but I told her I don't have to handle it.
Henry?
Hi, Ashley.
Ashley?
Henry, I remember your name this time. Charity.
There you go.
And I met your father the other day, too.
You got reading material for you.
My father today?
Yeah, the other day, sometime ago. Okay, so what are we gonna do, folks?
Well, does anybody know if these have been vetted, for the lack of a better description?
Can we work through these without a lot of new focuses?
It shouldn't be an issue.
Well, here's the thing, we've got the jail inspection, and so we're vanning about going, doing the jail inspection and coming back and setting down in earnest and ammern these. So give us some feedback.
That's fine. And like I said, if you absolutely do have a question, we get stuff on one. I don't mind grabbing them if they're not busy. It's not like we're not here.
Well, no, but it makes sense to see you all because we rely on you, so we need to know what you, you folks think. Do you want to delve into some of them now?
I.
Joe?
To me, I think just because of time, let's get over there, get that done. We have one thing done, and then we can just do this. That'd be my preference, whatever the chairman says.
We get to go in and we find out it's not working well because these guys aren't in here full-time and.
Today?
Well, I think Charity pulled out a lot of the simpler ones.
I didn't get out, I didn't get over there yesterday or Friday.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the consensus is, is we go conduct our jail inspection. Those of us that are able to leave that building and come back over here, we will do so then.
And you're going to probably want to announce a time that.
We start back up, so our jail inspection and a little lunchtime, so we should start up at 1 o'clock.
We'd like to reconvene at whatever time you say.
1:00, is that, how's that fit for you folks? Does that work for you, Mabel?
I think that's a great idea.
And does this need to guard vehicleization stand, you keep?
We did not livestream protests, evaluation protests last year, just for precedence sake, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Just because, I mean, we're really diving into, into the details.
Okay, so we're gonna jump ahead on the agenda here. We're gonna go to number 12. We're gonna go conduct our quarterly inspection, and we will be back here after that and lunch, and we'll start up at 1:00. Does that give you time to get stuff set up and going, and work for you folks?
Perfect.
Can I do my walkthrough? Shouldn't want to be right back here because it will, it shouldn't be too long, but it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I try to please. I aim to please. You know me.
You aim to please, huh?
You're gonna have recess right now?
No, we're doing, we're doing the jail inspection.